That brings us to item 10, Consider the Report of the Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee. Is there a motion?
Move it. Second.
Straight second by Wolfski.
Sitma.
I'm sorry, okay, sorry. Mr. Schump.
Mr. Chairman and members of the City Council, my name is Bob Schump. I live at 1913 Ninth Street Northwest. I'm a member of the Mayor's Committee on Sales Tax and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I want to remind you that we're asking that you build the enhanced flood control project for phases one through five as soon as possible, using the first penny for the local share. We've recognized the need for NOAA's money and for community facilities dollars. We urge you to adopt a project for Southeast Minot and to get that built with the second penny. And we'd like you to do anything possible to keep the present 100-year flood designation so that we don't confiscate people's homes because of increased flood protection tax, not tax, but...
Insurance.
Remind me, I'm only 85. The floodplain insurance, which rates are going to skyrocket if we don't keep the 100-year designation. And there are some very good reasons for it. It's logical, it's fair, and we ask that you do everything possible to keep it. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Alderman Padrigula.
Just had a question here. You said something about allocating one cent, but when I read this here, it says that we may need to reallocate one cent. So we're not doing that right now. We're keeping it at half a cent, right?
Right now, you have a half a cent dedicated to flood control. There are some that want to dedicate more than half a cent now. And you can do that if you wish, but if you look at our proposal, there are three budget years, the next three, that basically nothing changes. And you can use those three years to set aside funds for things like the North Hill Fire Station. You have in your budget this year, in the 2017 budget, to allocate enough money to pay for about half of that project. Well, it'd be nice in next year's budget if you budgeted the second half from sales tax so that you don't have to collect that money from property tax. And there are other things that you can do in the next three years to mitigate the increase in property taxes by using sales tax. When you get to the final stages of one through five, when you build the Maple Diversion, you'll need to reallocate almost all of the first penny. Hopefully, by that time, the first penny will be worth more, but based upon the city's estimation, it won't increase that rapidly. So I think you should use the next three years to do everything you can to set aside funds for projects that you know you're going to build and that you know you will have to increase property taxes to build.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Chairman Janssens. Mr. Schump, will you help me understand your... I understand, I believe, your line of thought here. My concern, and I think you understand this from the Sales Tax Committee...
Yes, I do.
...by us not allocating more than a half cent right now, this project over the long term, would you agree, is going to cost the City of Minot more money?
The...
Interest rates and...
Based upon the figures given us. And by the way, this report is only someone else's figures. It's the project manager's figures and schedule and the city's estimate of what it will cost us to borrow money and what the tax will raise. So we used other... We used the figures that were given us to put together the proposal. And yes, you can increase the amount from that first penny anytime you wish. I think when you consider the 2018 budget, however, you probably budget money for the fire station. I would guess you would. It's in this year's budget, so I would guess you would. So I would think you'd look at the increase so that you can pay more for flood protection up front on an annual basis. At least, I know that's the way I would do it. But I made the motion and, pardon me, I seconded your motion to go 25-25 because if that's the wish the City Council, that's exactly the way it should be. I don't have any... And by the way, our report wasn't designed to tell you how to spend the sales tax. It was designed to tell you that the sales tax can build the project, both one through five and Southeast Minot. There's enough money in the first and second penny, based upon current estimates, to build all of the project within the City of Minot.
Alderman Sitma.
Thank you, Mr. President, and want to take the opportunity to say thank you to you and to everyone else that sat on that committee because it was kind of on and off again with some of the issues with council. But you guys did a lot of work on it, and I greatly applaud you for that. Just had a question. I sat through most of the meetings and I hope I don't open a can of worms here and nobody takes me too literal, but at any time was the half cent that is currently allocated from the county over to the jail project, at any time was that considered being proposed to talk about transitioning that to flood control down the road?
You're talking about the county's half cent, which expires, I think, in 2022 or is it 24?
Yes, sir.
That was talked about, and people talked about it being in favor of asking the citizens to approve an additional half-cent sales tax. It wasn't clear. Some were saying approve it to pay for flood control, some were saying to approve it so that you could have some of the things that are presently paid for by sales tax, paid with the additional half cent. There was never a motion made, but it was talked about. Right now, we were dealing with what do we have right now? What can we use to make a decision right now? And right now, we have cost estimates, we have revenue estimates, we have 193 million from the state of North Dakota over the next eight years, and we have a project that needs to be built. Can we bid sometime this fall, the first phases? So we dealt with what have we now? What can we do with what we have now? I don't think there'd be many people that would oppose an additional continuing the county sales tax for flood control.
Thank you, Mr. Schump.
Anything further for Mr. Schump? Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Appreciate your work.
Never, John McMartin, 213 Seventh Street Southeast. Never to correct Bob, but I think Alderman Sitma, to more clearly answer your question, there were representatives from the county there during the meetings. And it was made very clear to us that the county expects to let that one half-cent sunset as it was written in their ordinance. And if another group wants to try to access that same dollar amount, it would be up to that group at that time to offer a ballot measure to the residents of Ward County.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Alderman Wolfski.
I have, I think, a question for Kelly. Do we have the authority to reallocate the first penny without voter approval? I feel like we've done that in the past, but I do want to just confirm that.
President Janssens and Alderman Wolfski, yes, the City Council has the authority to amend the ordinance without sending that to an election. The first penny was actually implemented by the City Council.
Okay. Alderman Padrigula.
Following up on that question, so are we locked into anything, asking Kelly this, in terms of the allocation of the two cents total, the total sales tax burden, are we legally obligated to set that aside for any purpose of those two cents? NOAA's.
President Janssens and Alderman Padrigula, right now, the City Council is obligated to leave it as the ordinance states. The second penny is the NOAA's penny, which was temporarily reallocated by the ordinance that was ratified by the voters in 2011, which is delegated to 40% to capital improvements, 30% to community facilities, and 30% to property tax relief. But at any time that the Finance Director determines that NOAA's needs funding, that can be immediately reallocated to NOAA's. So that's how the ordinance reads right now.
In terms of the vote of the people, if we wanted to change that allocation, would we have to have another vote of the people?
President Janssens and Alderman Padrigula, this ordinance was not an initiated ordinance. It was something that the City Council sent to an election. With that, I believe this council has the authority to amend it. Whether or not the people would want that to be amended without a vote is something that the council would have to consider, and it can certainly be sent to an election. There is always the potential that an ordinance can be referred.
Do you remember when that election was? Was that before or after the flood?
President Janssens and Alderman Padrigula, I believe it was two weeks before the flood or one week before the flood, just briefly before the flood.
Just to make sure, thank you very much, just to make sure I understand this correctly. We have a total of two cents of sales tax, and the council could reallocate that as it wishes. Obviously, someone could challenge that, there could be a referral, but legally, if we amend the ordinance, we can fool with the allocation of those two cents.
Alderman Padrigula, President Janssens and Alderman Padrigula, the city, through its Home Rule Charter, has the authority to impose sales taxes and then additionally has the authority to amend ordinances. So yes, the City Council can reallocate the two pennies as it deems necessary.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to add that, not to confuse the matter, but there is an agreement between the city and the Source River Joint Board, which requires 50% of the first penny, or sales tax, I should say, 50% of sales tax penny, to be allocated toward flood control. So there is some restriction there, just so you're aware.
In other words, we couldn't go below the half penny?
Correct.
Gotcha, thank you. Mr. Schump, do you have something for the...
Mr. President, members of the council, I put on my NOAA's hat now. The NOAA's tax was initiated by a vote of the people, and it maybe could be changed by the City Council, but I would caution you because you also have a contract with the state of North Dakota to pay 35% of the cost of the NOAA's project. And that's set up by contract. There's no way you can get away from it. So if you try to abolish the NOAA's tax, and our report covers NOAA's and funds it appropriately, if you try to avoid that responsibility, you'll wind up with huge water bills, and we have the highest water bills in the state right now. Because we'll have to pay that 35% of whatever the costs are, that the state determines our costs are, by another method. And the only method I know to pay a water bill is through a water bill. So I would... I don't believe you should disturb the NOAA's tax until we've collected enough money to fund the project. And at that time, the NOAA's tax goes away.
Alderman Padrigula.
Just to clarify, how much of the two cents total is the NOAA's right now?
I didn't understand.
How much is the NOAA's allocation in terms of the sales tax?
Right now, none.
Well, how much would it have been or is intended to be when it begins?
There's... I believe there's something like $33 million in the bank right now. I'm told by the City Manager, we'll need another 40 million to collect to pay our share of the cost of building the water treatment plant at the reservoir. Once the judge makes a decision on the case, the NOAA's Advisory Committee will get together and we will come up with a method of asking the state to reduce that amount. But I don't want to call a meeting of the Advisory Committee until we have a decision. Hopefully, that'll be made sometime between now and September, hopefully this, September this year. And at that time, we'll all know what our possibilities are, what we'll still have to collect, and I'm hoping for good news. But in the meantime, the committee report does recognize the NOAA's project and community facilities, which, by the way, ends, I believe, in August four years from now. And at that time, NOAA's would collect all of the tax until it has enough to pay its bills.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Schump? City Finance Director.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification in regards to NOAA's. Right now, we have the authority to reallocate that second penny to cover those anticipated expenses. And like what was already discussed, we anticipate that that reallocation will take place beginning in 2019. And what would happen is that portion of the penny that is reallocated to NOAA's will proportionately reduce the allocations that are in that second penny of sales tax. So the remaining portions of that second penny would be reduced proportionately by whatever is reallocated to NOAA's. For example, if we take 30% of that second penny, the remaining 70% would be allocated proportionately the way it is today.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Mr. Sitma.
Just a comment on, I guess, the whole overview here. Looking at, you know, when we talk about possibly reallocating more from that first penny, this is a discussion that's likely going to, I think, hold greater meaning come budget time when we take a look at our current budget situation that the City Manager had just overviewed for us. And I think we're going to get a lot better idea whether it's through the property tax buy-down, the infrastructure improvements, the economic development and property tax relief, all of that. I think approving this tonight is a good idea. It gives us the ability to take a greater look at it in a month and a half, two months, when we really get down to the nitty-gritty in the budget.
Thank you. Alderman Straight.
Chairman Janssens, I guess I was going to speak to that same thing. I clearly had a vantage point of being a part of that committee, and I appreciate Mr. McMartin and Stephanie being a part of it, Holford from... These are tough choices, and I think as we move to July 20th and we look at community facilities funding, there's a number of moving parts here that are going to be part of the budget. And at the end of the day, it's just, we're going to have differing opinions on how we move forward with this. And so I appreciate the challenge ahead. I don't think clearly we're up here... I feel like I'm a bit out of... I was at a... I'm fortunate because I got to sit in those meetings, and you all missed a bunch of very important information if you couldn't meet. And so I'll do my best, I think, to get additional information to you and have our City Finance Director and our City Manager give you that information because it's all the questions that were asked here tonight. Alderman Wolfski, if we can change things, clearly it's in the ordinances, we can make that determination. I think there are people in the audience that would be very much upset with us if we did that without a very open and honest dialogue of the changes that would come to the community. So just food for thought for tonight.
Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe I could offer a parachute for the City Council here. A review of the two ordinances that talk about the allocation of revenues for the first and second penny currently, without any changes, would allow us to devote up to 115% of both pennies to flood control. 40% of the second penny is to be used for community improvements, and flood control is clearly identified as one of those community improvements. Back to the first penny, 50% is already allocated to flood control, so you have that 50%. And then 25% goes to community infrastructure. And that community infrastructure allocation also clearly identifies flood control as a viable expense. So currently, without any change, you have up to 115% that you could allocate via the budget process, really, by directing staff to, you know, put more in the budget towards flood control without having to change any ordinances. So there isn't an ordinance adjustment that's needed at this point. And based upon Mr. Schump's work and that of the staff and others, I think we're all in agreement that 115% of the two pennies is not needed for some time in order to finance the first four phases that get us to flood protection for 60% of the community. So hopefully, that helps a little bit.
Alderman Padrigula.
To respond to that, it helps a lot. Well, it does. I'm very ambivalent about this. I appreciate the work of the committee. I only missed the last meeting. I was on a long withheld family vacation. Other than that, they worked really hard. What I do have concerns about is that I don't think we're funding flood control adequately. I'm very, very reluctant to allocate any money toward community organizations so that if that... And that will be part of the budget process. So that would give us another 30% of one, and we're at 50 now. I think if we sliced and diced some other things, we'd easily come up to 100%. And I agree, we don't need more than 100% of one penny or one penny for this. You know, I think if this works out in the budget process, if we, in another month and a half, we have to decide, I'm okay with that. But I really think we need to put much more of a priority on flood protection. If we have to make a decision within a month and a half, we've worked out several other things, I'm okay with that. But otherwise, I would be opposing this because I just don't think it's right for such an important community priority to kind of kick the can down the road, as has been said. So I'm willing to support this tonight with the understanding that by the time the budget rolls around, hopefully, we'll have the courage to allocate a full cent of sales tax and look at some of the other funding mechanisms that were talked about at the committee, such as trying to get more basin-wide funding, working with the county to have a transition when their tax half-cent expires, to have a vote on that. There are a lot of other things that we need to consider. I agree, one cent should be adequate. And if we can get that through the budget process, I'm okay with that. But I really want to go on record as saying, you know, half a cent, I don't think is enough. I don't think that puts enough of a priority on flood protection.
City Manager.
Mr. President, Alderman Padrigula, I just wanted to make sure we were clear. The allocations that I was referring to just a few moments ago were separate and aside from the 30% community facilities allocation, I think you just referenced.
Right.
That... Not to correct anything other than to make sure we knew that was even a different set of the second penny.
The bottom line is, as I understand you, is that we have more flexibility in terms of the budget process, moving the percentages around.
Correct.
I agree.
Okay, Alderman Wolfski, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Janssens. This is such a... To use Mr. Berry's analogy from one of the meetings, this is such a monstrous elephant to consider in this whole equation, and frankly, it's kind of turning my head to mush tonight. But what I heard loud and clear throughout those committee meetings, and I think I was at all of them, was our current allocation of a half of penny isn't enough. It just, it doesn't do the job. And through a lot of language over the past few years, through our NDR application, through lots of different formal actions here and there, agreements with the SRJB, even though I think our actual agreement only commits us to the half penny, I think it has been our larger commitment and intent to be a basin-wide project. And so as I sit here tonight, I do, I kind of think back to Alderman Straight's proposal back in June to reaffirm the city's commitment to a basin-wide plan. And that is a position that I think is very important, not only from what goes out in the news tomorrow. I think it's also important to remember that we are not the primary project sponsors on this. We get to make recommendations, and we have stepped forward as an important funding source. But ultimately, at the end of the day, it is the Source River Joint Board that is moving this project forward, that is advancing this, liaising with the State Water Commission. And I don't, in any way, shape, or form, I would really hate for the city to send a signal that there is some hedging on the basin-wide concept. And the 50% of one penny doesn't get us there right now. So I don't know if it's tonight, but I think very, very soon, we need a substantial gesture from the City of Minot that shows a commitment, and not just us talking, but committing our dollars and probably making some sacrifices in some areas towards moving more money towards flood protection in a very concrete and visible way. So that said, I think maybe one of my larger concerns and one of the reasons I'm struggling with how to go about it at this point in time is because I, throughout that Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee, the framework that was always assumed, that we always started from, was that we have to work within the two pennies that we already have. And I think it's my general opinion at this point that those revenue tools, that first penny and that second penny that was originally developed for NOAA's and then reallocated, are tools that were generated and created for us at a different time in Minot's history. Looking forward to the challenges that we face over the next 20 or 30 years, I think we might have to rebuild those tools. We might have to frankly tear them down and start over in some form or fashion. Now, I don't know exactly how to go about, and that's not what I'm suggesting we do tonight by any means, but I think that conversation needs to be brought forward in a more in-depth sense. Yes, we have to fund NOAA's. Yes, there is desire for community facilities funding. Yes, we want to keep property taxes as low as possible, and we need to fund all the ongoing obligations of the city. But none of the pieces seem to fit together very well when I try and build them out of these existing two pennies. So I guess I'm going to share comments. I'm not sure what I'm going to offer beyond that, but yeah.
Alderman Padrigula.
I guess I would agree with you, Josh. I'm willing to defer this discussion for the next couple of months, not the next couple of years. I think we need to have the money. I think we need to have a plan by the time our budget is approved in September. And I don't want to stand in the way of the process by opposing this. I'm real close to voting no on this. I'm real, real close. But if we can take two months to iron it out and get a consensus, I'm willing to do that. Again, a couple of years, not enough. Couple of months, okay.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe I could get the council a little bit more comfortable with Mr. Schump's idea. If you advanced the recommendation out of the Sales Tax Commission Committee, we do start to build flood protection virtually immediately through the existing collections we have in sales taxes. It's clear, and the staff have substantiated Mr. Schump's numbers, that for the next two and a half years, maybe three, we can advance the flood protection project the way it's been conceived without allocating any more money to flood control at this point in time. And Mr. Schump has, in his suggestion, which has been moved by the committee, said that he's given the city flexibility to allocate more funding from sales tax allocations as needed to continue to advance the project in the schedule that's been identified, which is, we understand, to be about eight years at this point in time. And that coincides also with the funding that we're getting from the state and the essentially lockout provision that the state obligated us to when they authorized that funding for us. So I don't think we lose anything at this point in time. Actually, I think what you do is affirm that we can start the project. We're going to, you know, immediately use the funding that's been identified with the 50% of the first penny and start the project. And then as time goes on and money is needed to advance the more expensive components of the project, the flexibility is built into the existing ordinances, and you as a group can, through the budget process, direct more and more of that funding to the flood control projects as needed. So I don't know if that helps or not, but I think you have the tools you need, and you can take the position that you need. We can start this immediately and retain the flexibility moving forward to advance flood control as it's conceived currently in phases one through four.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just request a little clarification? What inside the current motion do we become obligated to? Can anybody provide a little clarity for me? Is it, is this the 20-year bond terms?
Well, we are receiving this report from the, from the sales tax committee.
I think I opened the wrong PDF.
Mr. Schump?
President, and members of the council, the, if you pass the motion, it doesn't obligate you to a thing. It's a guide, it's a plan, it's based upon present information. Present information is that you can fund the project, both on the north side of the river and the south side of the river, with the two pennies of sales tax. Depends a little bit on getting some state aid for the southeast portion, but it also depends upon getting some concrete information on exactly what it would cost to build that southeast portion. And I'm sure you'll be, Alderman Straight and others will be looking at that soon. So, it obligates you to nothing, it gives you a plan. The plan is to borrow $117 million of local share to build one through four, one through five, and that will take one cent of the sales tax. And it'll be gone, it'll be spent, that one cent, in four years, if you, if the plan and the schedule is correct, when you bid the maple diversion. The first penny will be completely used then to pay bonds. We're proposing 20-year bonds because, right at the present time, it looks as though that's what would succeed. If 10-year bonds, it looks like there's not enough sales tax to cover. If it's 100%, 10-year bonds, it's say 3%. So, it's a plan that can be changed depending upon the conditions that face you. And the city manager is correct, there is some flexibility. And by the way, if you look at that chart, you'll see that there's $33 million of projects proposed for, out of city of Minot projects, for the balance of the area. I put that in there because I thought the joint board might have a possibility of getting $20, $25 million from the State Water Commission sometime in the next couple of years. But that's going to be very difficult for them because of our $193 million. So, so again, it's a plan, one you can change, and you should look at it every budget year.
Thank you, Mr. Schump. Any further discussion? Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Chairman Janser, and I appreciate Mr. Schump's work, and during the committee process, clearly, we just had a difference in opinion. I wanted to get it to this body to start this conversation tonight. I'm not supportive of it, because I think, as a citizen who's heard from a number of people, they want to see the city do more, and give more, and pay more now. We're going to have that conversation in the next couple of months. I don't, just out of an opinion, I don't agree with kind of going with the status quo. I think people are frustrated that we haven't put more of a commitment to it to date. If you look at city manager's slides earlier, dating back '20, '11, '12, '13, we had $26 million in sales tax. We could have been putting more to it. And that's not to say that I'm not supportive of building a new fire station or transfer station for our recycling. What it's going to mean is that we are going to have to include things in our budget, and bite down real hard, and prioritize, and have the conversation of what's needed. I think that's just my overall frustration, is that, nothing against the committee, I just, I guess I didn't get what I wanted to see, and that's why we're here now. And so, I guess I just wanted to state that, that that, I think, is the rationale, that residents want to see the city of Minot commit more, and bite down, and not spend. And that is what I think all of us are going to have to convey through the budget process, so.
Alderman Wolfski?
Thank you, Chairman Janser. Mr. Berry, I know you guys are in the process of crafting the budget. The guidance, the recommendation tonight, if we were to say we need to move towards 60% of a penny towards flood protection in 2018, or 70% of a penny towards flood protection in 2018, my assumption is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that that would have a very big impact on the way you guys go about crafting the budget for 2018.
City manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Wolfski, that's correct, it will have an impact on how we can, how we budget the remainder of the projects that, you know, may be left out, if you will, by reallocating that. There's a, there's a process, I don't know if you've heard, but we're attempting to utilize in the funding of the flood control projects called just-in-time financing, which means you wouldn't budget more than you need at the time you need it. Otherwise, you set monies aside that sit there and strain the budget on the other side, but you still have this funding amount. Let's say you put $10 million away in one year's time, but you didn't need it for three years. You squirrel that 10 million away, but now you've got to backfill the 10 million to make up the budget in other ways. Does that make sense?
It does.
Now, that can be done, and you can, you can create a nest egg, if you will, for flood control. There's no question about that. But there is another approach, and I think that's what Mr. Schump is proposing here, which is to finance the project as you need to, and leverage those funds to take care of other things inside the city. Now, I'm not necessarily endorsing or discouraging you from that, but that is the thinking behind, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Schump's mouth either, but that's the idea behind not overburdening ourselves by overbudgeting for flood control at a time we don't, we don't have projects to spend that on. So, it's just two different approaches, and that's why I think the team is struggling, is because it's just differences of philosophy. But hopefully, that helps. Yes, if we put some money away for flood control and keep it in the bank, we'll have to make that money up somewhere else in the budget.
A continuation, sir?
Alderman Wolfski?
Sure. You know, as I see the financing schedule and the project schedule, we're going to have some pretty significant expenses very early on here. If we reallocate to 60, 70, 80%, you know, this is all theoretical, but that won't be banked very long, would be my anticipation in this particular case. Would that be correct?
City manager?
Mr. President, Alderman Wolfski, generally, that is correct. In fact, one of the, one of the recommendations the staff put together was a 10% allocation increase, meaning you'd go from 50% this year to 60% next year to 70% the following year, and so on. And easing ourselves essentially into, but committing ourselves to that longer-term full penny allocation. Again, that's just a different way of thinking and budgeting for it, but yes, that is correct.
Anything further? Alderman Padrigula?
I also want to comment on the fact I think we're being boxed in. We're being given an either-or choice. Either we go with a fire station and other necessary improvements, or we go for flood protection, and I'm not willing to be boxed in like that. The citizens approved spending money on some community facilities two weeks before the flood. I don't think anybody ever anticipated the disaster the community would have, and I have no problem at all in yanking that part of the budget. That would give us, you know, 80, 8 tenths of a cent right now. My preferred goal would be to have one full cent of the sales tax allocated as of January 1. That's what I would like. If it makes life a little bit easier, I'm willing to kind of ease into it, but I'm not willing to ease into it forever, and I'm not willing to sacrifice these other things. I think we dig into our pockets a little bit deeper for something that's important. You know, Mr. Berry's done a wonderful job of economizing, you know, the previous city manager, you know, took a lot of initiative on his own to cut back things. You know, there's only so much you can cut. This is, the survival of the community, the prosperity of the community depends on good flood control, and I'm willing to reach into my pocket. So, I don't, again, I wanted to be careful that we don't frame this as either-or. You know, I think what you'll have to do, Mr. Berry, is present us with a range of options and alternatives. But right now, I want to be very, very clear about that. I want to get to that one cent as quickly as possible, and I don't want to necessarily sacrifice the other things. And we're already doing a lot to cut back. And anyway, so, I guess I'm going to be voting for this, but my assumption is that by the time the budget is adopted in September, we'll have some additional funds that we can expend toward that. And I'm not going to be willing to sacrifice important programs and activities just so the status quo is maintained.
Seeing none, caller all.
Straight?
No.
Wolfski?
No.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes, but barely.
Sitma?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. That brings us to item 11, other bus--